Please stand for opposing leaders.
I would testify of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, welcome everybody, welcome to all our guests. We're not used to having people in a room with us, so this is pretty awesome. Uh, roll call, all board members except for Kent who's excused and Tim uh, are not here, is not here. We do have proper notification of an open meeting. Our first action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2019 regular board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second it? I have a motion to second, any questions? Are you none all in favor, state aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, it's that time of the year, we have a board reorganization, and our first action item with that is election of the officers of the board. So we'll open, uh, we'll just open up for the president's position right now. And nominate Bob Roche for president? I'll second. And motion to second, any other nominations? Any other nominations?
You're waiting way too long, Bob.
Hearing none, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you guys, I appreciate the vote of confidence, I do not take it lightly, so we'll press on. Uh, next position would be for vice president, I'd like to make a motion for Ken Rice, since he's not here.
I'll second it, because he's not here.
Any other nominations for vice president? Are you none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next would be for secretary. I'm here, Sue. I'll nominate Sue, second. Second, any other nominations? Are you none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last but not least, this treasurer.
I'm Nick Creek Thompson, second.
Any other nominations for treasurer? Are you none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Next action item is resolution to approve the bill list, petition your packet.
Make a motion to approve the bill list.
Second that motion? We have a motion to second, any questions? Are you none all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is communication comments from members of the public. Okay, Ally, are you here Ally? Alright, come on up here. You have to face the crowd here, anywhere up there.
Okay.
Uh, before you start though, we have some rules to go over, just, this applies to everybody that wants to speak to the board, okay? So, anyone wishing to speak to the board must register on the sign up sheet, which you did. There's a three minute time limit, it's enforced, public comment is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual board members, should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to the comments or questions. He or she has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless designated by the board president. Board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement if public comments are in regard to an agenda item. When the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments, questions raised by the public. Finally, the only board member, only the board will discuss and/or take action, there will be no public communications during the time of agenda topics. Okay?
Um, hi, my name is Ally Benneker and I'm a sophomore here at Arrowhead. My friend Adam Bronchwig, who could not make it today, and I are trying to start a chapter of TARS, which is Teenage Republicans, here at Arrowhead. First, I would like to thank you, Mrs. Myra, for actively, actively considering the club and communicating with Adam and I. We really appreciate your effort to help us out, and while we're still in discussion, we would like to bring it, we would like to bring the proposal of the, of the club to the attention of the school board, because we believe that this club really has the ability to thrive at Arrowhead. Um, so the purpose of this club is to help students who identify themselves as Republicans to learn more about the party and foster their beliefs, disseminate information and knowledge from members of the Republican Party, to volunteer to help candidates running for office, and most importantly, to give back to our community and country together with people who share our values. The purpose of a TARS chapter is not to engage in debate, not to press our beliefs on others, or create any controversy or division in our school. This club is not uncommon, as there are hundreds of high schools across the country with this club, with over 65,000 members. Many notable websites have indicated that political clubs are the best kinds of clubs to start at high schools. It is important that this club is sponsored by the school, because Adam and I care very deeply about Arrowhead High School. Aside from our love and dedication to the school, it would also be very beneficial for Arrowhead to be able to take ownership for the great things this club is going to accomplish. We also have over 30 students at Arrowhead interested in this club, and are expecting it to grow even more if and when it is established. This club has major interests, many benefits for our school and students, and will be led by Adam and I, who are both extremely passionate about this club and Arrowhead, and our great leaders. Thank you for your time.
Okay, just as a note to the board, the discretion to allow co-curricular clubs is, is lazen, uh, basically in the lap with the administrators of the school, uh, because they're the ones that have to deal with the day-to-day operations of the school. Uh, whether to permit or not permit is guided by our legal team, so that the right and legal decisions can be made for the school as well as the, the, the club as well. So, rest assured Laura and her team are researching the topic and will respond to it.
Will we get a, all of those?
Sure, I can give an update and ask people what they know.
Okay. Moving on, superintendent's report.
And my superintendent's report is phenomenal, because it's all from guests, so you won't hear me droning on. Um, the school board, virtually every year, has the responsibility, and I would contend the privilege, of approving new courses. Our teachers put a lot of time and energy and thought into proposing new courses, and then our curriculum committee of the board and the board put a lot of, yeah, put a lot of time and energy and thought into proposing, or proposing, but approving new classes. Um, I've seen the school board get really enthused about classes, and that's just when they're on paper. And then it's really fun to have the instructor and the students come in after it's been up and running for a year, and to share what's really happening in that course. So what you saw on paper as a proposal and approved, you can see come to life through our staff and students. Um, so I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Stouse, who is the, the developer of the course and the teacher of coaching officiating, and officiating, and then he has some student helpers here.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so with me, I have five of our students, six of them are gonna come, but due to activities in spring weather, one got rescheduled. If he can steps up, he's actually gonna be on his way to working with kids tonight, heading his attire for wrestling. So, I'm gonna have them introduce themselves quickly, go through, introduce them, give them their name. Uh, some of them are currently in coaching officiating this semester, some are coaching officiating last semester. So, sir, we'll just kind of walk down, or speak down.
Uh, I'm James Zerbell, I am a junior at Arrowhead, and I took the class first semester, and I think it really helped, because I coached in fourth grade basketball, and that was in the WSYBL, so the state basketball league, and like, understanding how like, to work with kids, to like, help them like, get better in their own ways, instead of just like, be telling them.
I'm Bailey Dinegar, I'm a senior at Arrowhead. Um, I'm currently in the class right now, and I took it to further my passion of sports, and hopefully to learn more about what it takes to be a coach, as I want to do that in the future.
Hi, I'm Ally Kaiser, I'm a junior at Arrowhead, and I took coaching and officiating last semester. And I took the course because I'm currently a girls' youth lacrosse coach and a girls' youth referee for lacrosse also. And so I took it because I wanted to further enhance my skills with my coaching and officiating, and I felt that the class really paid off.
I'm Rachel Keeltho, I'm a senior at Arrowhead, and I took the class first semester. And um, throughout the course, like, I just really grew in like, my passion for sports, and it made me realize what I wanted to study in, um, college, and that would be kinesiology, because I just love, um, being involved with activities like, and athletics.
Hi, my name is Keegan O'Toole, and I'm a junior here at Arrowhead, and I am taking the class right now this semester. And I took this because one of my dream jobs is to be a Division One college coach, and I definitely think that this would help to get a head start on that, and I'm currently coaching right now, and that's where I just came from. And uh, it's hard to, it's, coaching is a difficult thing, so I definitely thought that this could help, and it did.
Excellent. So they're gonna, we're gonna, it's nice to see them, although not even know that they're a semester away, but we grow together, we share a lot of ups and downs and ups and downs throughout the semester, so it's nice to see them, the three, and such as well, and I took them all. Thank you them for coming in, also a thank you for the Sherry Mills, our department coordinator, for coming in, listening, and uh, not only helping with the course, but passing the course, and the drive and the media, uh, kind of the behind as well.
Bailey?
Okay, so coaching and officiating is a semester-long course. Um, it's a general elective credit, it's a block course, which means you need two periods, um, every other day, and the course is open to any junior or senior student.
So, students interested in coaching and officiating, sports teaching, and leading, working with adolescents in sports activity venues. So for the first semester, first and second hour, there was 23 students, and third and fourth hour, there was 20 students in second semester. Uh, first and second, there was 24 students, and third and fourth hour, there was 19 students. Uh, eighteen, or 86 students total, and 82 students enrolled for the 2019-2020 school year.
We're extremely satisfied with the 82 number after a first year, and being a junior and senior level course, sometimes the, um, juniors can't take courses. So, we're extremely happy with the 82 number and interest that's generated both in coaching and officiating. A little quick overview of what we look at, as they alluded to some of the tools that they have in their toolkit when they are out working. We talk about principles of coaching reflect the, that's another way to look at self-disprostration, but it's human being. Principles of behavior, communication, motivation, how you handle a kid that's on top of the backstop and need to practice. Examples we can use in the class now. Sometimes I use an average of my own kids. So, principles of teaching, we look at how methodology, pedagogy, and how individuals learn, and then planning for teaching, we do little vignettes, we do, uh, work up to the final project, which I'll, we'll talk about the second. We'll talk a little bit about risk management. We're basically happy to negotiate and creating a safe environment for, uh, not only the athletes, but coaches and referees, it's important, and so too.
And then for our final exam grade, we all, as a class, we've learned about everything that makes up a good coach and a good official. So at the end of the semester, we all make a prac, a practice plan, and then from there, we, we observe one of our other classmates and their practice, we reflect on their practice, and what we think we should do in ours, and then we present, and we give, so we coach a practice. And in our practices, we have to implement everything that we have learned throughout the semester. And Coach Stouse is videotaping us, so that then we can reflect on things that we need to work on and improve on, so that we really have all the techniques and proper skills to become a successful coach.
We have a glimpse of some of these guys in action, it's like a two, three minute video clip, just wanted to make sure the layers as we're watching. This is a peek inside of, uh, our classes from last semester and a little bit from this semester too. Well, there's music, but we can just watch. There's some really good points you made there, Bailey. Who are the, who are the students that are coaching? Are they part of our class?
They're, they're, they're actually.
Yeah, so the 20, the 22 that Keegan alluded to, what we do is, when one teacher's on, so Rachel's doing volleyball presentation right there, the two that are on, one is on deck, and the next one after that, so also to speak, they hold for, they watch, they consult ready, thinking about their peer assessment. This is videotaped, obviously, and reflect, if they were to teach and coach again, what would they? Those are some of our coaches in action, and some other ones as well. Little video clip. The officiating part, so obviously it's called coaching and officiating, you spend um, some time on officiating, and if you have any, you've gained, you've gained, you know, Sue and I have been stuck in volleyball. The WIA is extremely short of officials. The things that we look at in terms of officiating, is why to officiate, the responsibilities, duties of official, the proper mechanics of officiating, the styles, ethics. The big one for them is, how do they get started? Where do they go, what sport, would it be lacrosse, where do I go to get started with officiating with lacrosse, basketball, cyber, or whatever, action, or whatever, officiating? We've got legality issues, there's a huge push right now for assault on referees. The state of Wisconsin is not protected, it's just not foxed. You can see on the night, that organization, actually, the national organizations for officials and for classes to be, which we'll talk about in a second too. And then, we don't do our judge money, but we do talk about money, uh, that what does a, somebody that works Super Bowl make over the NCAA, double A final four, or going out there, a little bit, so, in terms of officiating, they get practice on officiating. So like, as an official, like, you get questioned a lot, like, based off, like, where you are, so like, getting the picture, like, that you're on the board. Max Ferris is the referee in that case, and um, like, in that position, if he was to make a call, nobody would question him, because he was close enough to be able to tell. Whereas if he's like, on the other side of the court and calls something, they're not gonna be able to like, he's not gonna be able to completely tell where the call was, so like, just being in the right spot at the right time to make sure you're making the right call.
Okay, so then also part of, um, being like, a high school level officiating is like, making sure that you master like, the mechanics, and obviously like, you build your way up to that, um, and just like, by repeating, repeatedly doing, um, the officiating and like, practicing and getting comfortable with it.
Good. Uh, open up the guest speakers, um, we've taken, using our own individuals, a lot of our coaches, our jobs, our coaches, our football, basketball coaches come in. Sure, their experience is how they got started, where they're at right now in their career, uh, what things they do well, how they communicate challenges that they have, so they share that experience. This semester, we had Coach Luther come in, 51 years of experience in coaching sport, uh, came in and shared a lot of great information with us, in terms of coaching as speakers. Two weeks ago, we had David Simon come in, from the, as I alluded to, the national, uh, he's an associate editor for the National Referee Magazine. That is every publication that an official can subscribe to, whether they're baseball, basketball, football, any official that's a publication, you see a, the associate editor for them. Brought a ton of literature in, it's kind of hard to see this posted, it's posted on social media. Um, brought in books that we now have in our library, we have them as resources, we have them in the activities office. Every book in terms of officiating, an example of, there's a pamphlet in the book on what to, you know, where are you after your first year of experience, uh, in officiating after your first year, sports specific books, a book, they're looking at what do you do when, uh, an official or a parent or somebody questions you, there's a whole procedure, and I don't keep that. So, um, we were very fortunate to have Dave join our class two weeks ago. Why coaching and officiating? The two quotes, one for each, coaching and then officiating, it's tough to read there. And I can, I think I probably could even go around the entire room here, if you work with kids or activities, at some point in time, somebody's gonna ask you if you can coach. And I'm hoping all five of these guys can say, absolutely, when do I go, let's go. And then the official, there can't be any games without officials. There can, seeing a lot of backcourt games, but as David Simon told us, good games have to have professionals, they can't have one, they can't have two. So, other intangibles that they have, they alluded to, it's tough for them to come in here and speak to you, you should see them in front of their classmates, they have a 60 minute practice, or in a call, they have a classmate question. So, leadership, collaboration, creativity, we have four or five basketball presentations, how are you gonna do something a little different and unique that's gonna capture all of these students in class for this 60 minutes? Perpetual thinking, flexibility, leadership, all the 21st century skills that we're looking for in all of our students, not just our coaching and officiating students. Just one more slide, and then, uh, then we finish. The impact that coaching and officiating has had already, uh, in Arrowhead, we have branched off, I had a couple of teachers get wind of what we're doing, and, uh, the kids were the best promoters, and so we're kind of doing an adult version of it on our Wednesday, our positive coaching, the activities office, and the work of Rittenwire. That has been phenomenal, bringing coaches together, collaborating, talking on the first Wednesday, among them, it's been very enjoyable, and a great time, and we would probably some share. This picture, Craig Hazy's basketball camp has a couple of, uh, of our individuals that are in coaching officiating, these guys have alluded already to how they're working in the community out there, and I just, off the top of my head, from different camps, basketball, AMSAP, what it's called, basketball, baseball, we're an athletic association, Keegan, Keegan had alluded to, AWA, Strike, it'll just go on and on. And then the last one, I alluded to Dave Simon before, when he left our presentation, he posted it, within a half an hour, I had somebody in Alaska contacting me, asking us for our curriculum, and then, by the time I left school, I had somebody in Arizona asking us where G2 is, or, and give us more information. That prompted David and I to talk, and he's gonna bring, uh, the referee magazine in, and they're gonna do a feature story on Arrowhead in the referee magazine, uh, May 30th, so we are hoping that no rain left it, so we're outside, and so, and have that, and get it right. So, um, just one more, or a last slide, some things that other students have said in our feedback, wanted to make sure that, good, bad, different. I've learned ways to evaluate players' instruction practice to keep everybody engaged. I enjoy how the class is not only led in the classroom, but also in the gym by the students. I enjoy, uh, watching the coaching presentations and observing how different coaches led different activities. I enjoy being able to coach the entire class the most, it was great to see my own practice, finding, being worked out and followed. I enjoy being able to actually go into the gym and be able to implement what we learned in the classroom to a real-life coaching and officiating. And then the last one, like how we didn't do the same thing every day, I have now a coach, I enjoyed the first part, first part of the semester to decide what kind of coach I would be, and how I was gonna follow that. So, we don't seem big into, into our class, we have a lot of fun, we learn, uh, and it's been super exciting the first year, so. Any questions?
How many different sports are you learning to coach in, about?
So presentations have ranged from, uh, wrestling, to martial arts, to, uh, a cheer presentation, to the traditional, traditionally the basketball and volleyball, we have a baseball, two baseball presentations tomorrow, softball, and a baseball. They focus and hone in, when they do their practice, on the sport that they envision themselves, potentially coaching in the future. Leading up to there, I choose, like, for demonstration speeches, or teaching a tactic, or a technical skill, I choose for them, so they have to know how to prepare, they need to research if they don't know, if they got another sport, uh, so we go through that whole gamut. So on the coaching side of things, um, it's kind of both, in officiating, we do volleyball and basketball, and depending on weather, softball, baseball. So, and they have, they do all three of those, if we, the weather difference. So. What I missed? Ethan Austin? Yeah? Any other questions?
Do you have any tough experiences with parents, or?
To more parents, to more than players.
Parents, I would think, I would think it would be more parents than players. Do they, I mean, what do we do, are that just?
We, last semester, remember Hatzie? So, we went through, and, I mean, I've coached here for 19 years, varsity, boys and girls, so in those 19 years, you have experiences. And I always, you always try to reflect on that from your experiences, so those experiences came out, and we role-play some of those.
That's important, I need to, because unfortunately, and that is, what is really being talked about now, is how terrible some people are.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, absolutely.
And you, and, you're young, you know, I'm sorry, I can't, and so I would think there'd be parents that would just pull in on the fact that you're young, and what the heck. And that would be pretty heavy to know what to do. So, he tells the students, good at teaching, you want to do that? That would be creepy.
One of the things in there too, the curriculum we use, you know, on the school side, uh, we use the American Sport Education Program curriculum, which is the same as the positive coaching, uh, coaching for athletes, all those different curriculums, they're all very similar. With that curriculum, students, if they want to get certified, can, last semester we had one student get certified, it's $80 if you go through the American Sport Education Program. But that allows them to do, if they go on to school, uh, if they get certified, the WAA requires, if you're gonna coach in high school and you're a non-licensed teacher, you need that certification. So if a student is interested in doing that, if you want to go to school, and they already have that.
Is it really, really, and is this a unique program here?
There's more and more of the officiating popping up, uh, like, Courtney Hatzie, offici- just the officiating in class. Uh, there are a handful, when I taught at Herford, I taught at Herford for 39 years, before coming here. Uh, so there's a handful of them around, I think you're gonna see more and more of them come up with the shortage of officials tonight. I mean, my wife hurts in the activities office, and conversation like 2:30, we're softball teams on the counter, and they have no official. There's just nothing with officials to come around, it's, it's, it's.
So finally, with a rate.
Yeah, exactly. Now we don't have a bad rate, so.
One thing I noticed, then, as an observer of the class, is, um, the students, and not only do they have to build their self-confidence to get in front of their peers and execute it, they have to find a way to have a commanding presence. So both coaching and officiating. Um, and it was remarkable to see some students who maybe aren't that type of person naturally, find a way to get that to come across in their coaching.
Coach Stouse, um, if, I heard basketball, volleyball is the sports that are being learned in terms of coaching and officiating, are there a lot of other sports that maybe are quite as popular? How do you, say wrestling?
Yep.
How would you teach, uh, officiating, wrestling, which is not much?
Right, so we, we do the, I don't know, I don't like the term popular particularly important, because I think all sports are important, but if they're interested in getting into that level, uh, or officiating wrestling. that level or officiating wrestling, I put them in the contact, last semester we had a student interested in lacrosse officiating, and I put them into contact with the WIA and the WIA has representatives in each one of those associations, they're official associations, that can get them started and give them the course, get them certified and get them games. And it's especially important for two ends, the information or the licenser, licensure so to speak, and then the second one is to get them an experience. An experience that is not intimidating to start, experience that you're not just thrown out there and then the process of them, teaching them of how to do that. We talk about the dynamics of positioning, we cover the officiating in general, what to expect if somebody questions a ball, where are you, get to the venue, what are your responsibilities? Those are some of the sports that are unique, but in a broad picture.
What sort of side of the official support, support in terms of, do you call determination or do you call it the school, it's the official?
Yeah, question, do you, in your class, do you also instruct in terms of, you know, you hear about concussions, injuries? Is that part of the course too of, you know, putting the protocol in?
Yeah, absolutely. We have pictures in our liability presentation around campus of where all the, if you're on campus, what's the emergency action plan? If a kid goes down, transferring risk, you're coaching a volleyball and you're coaching a few two team, if it gets in the head and there's no training there, what do you do? He's always like, oh. We, yeah, yeah, that's part of the risk management.
I'm so impressed with the class and I think that it's going to affect you more not only in officiating and coaching, but in everyday's life. Everyday life, no matter what business, what career you go into, these are going to be great things to fall back on and you're always going to be coaching someone your whole life and understanding their play and their trade. It's just amazing.
We're trying to coach him.
Yeah. Give it up. You should take my class. Fantastic. Yep. Sign them up.
Sign them up. Guys, this was great. Really neat to hear what we're learning each other. We're not scared really. We're probably not experienced.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And then the next part of my report, it's hard to imagine that the school year is already starting to wrap up, but we have the first of our end of year reports from Donna Smith and our Integrian Technologies Services. Can I just pull it down?
Hard to follow.
I'm like, you can go. You don't need to. You want to stay for the technology update.
Can we go too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right. So I'm going to go through some things of how we reached our goals this year. So as leaders of educational technology, my team is always looking for future technologies to make our network and equipment run more effectively and efficiently for our users. So we want our students to experience technology so they can be best prepared for their futures. As students use their own devices, that prepares them for those life admin tasks that we all have to do each day. But we also want her to prepare for post-secondary education that they may experience, whether it be logging into Canvas at University, a DWS system, or watching a YouTube video on how to set up their new printer. And that still is the most popular how-to video in two thousand and nineteen. You came back.
My keys.
She's running away now. So our students need to be prepared and confident to continue to learn and be adaptable using technology once they leave so they can contribute to our community. As our library and tech team works to accomplish these goals, we look to our focus plan and the International Society of Technology and Education. So there are standards, student standards that we cover, as well as the state information technology literacy standards, which are the same as the ISTI standards. The state has also created grade level competencies, which may help guide us. As, we also use our Speak Up survey information to guide our decisions. Our student device use remains at ninety-one percent, same as last year. At the state level, it went down from eighty-two to sixty-nine percent and national went up fifty-nine to sixty-one. So just information, kind of curiosity sort of information. Digital content that the students use at least monthly, Google Apps went up to ninety-eight percent from eighty-two last year. Online tests as assessments went up from seventy-one to ninety-four and educational games increased from seventy-two to eighty-five. And more of an interest, if you're tracking where the kids are going for their social media, our students are still heavily into Snapchat, including Streaks. If you watched Ayn Sawyer's Screen Time reporting and as I check in with our social media lessons and health classes, Streaks put a lot of stress on our students. Think of the Snapchat lessons as kids go to college. Instagram, as you can see, is not far behind at seventy-eight percent and Twitter and Facebook are fading for our kids. So our library goals this year were focused around encouraging lifelong learners through reading. Liz Monkwitz, English teacher and tech integrator, is leading our Lit Lunches. As she introduces a variety of new and high interest books over lunch, they are very well attended as our language arts department increases their choice book assignments. So that's when those get a lot of use. The library staff, Therese Rodiger, Cindy Musbach, Andrea Dolan and Heidi Blutnick, work together to create a shared electronic display between the campuses to promote reading. They promote and hand up prizes for Terry Carnell's Word of the Week and Cindy takes lead on our author visit calendar and Boswell Books recently had a night that focused on college writers. So here is our South Campus display. You can see our digital display as well as our book display. At North right now, in addition to book displays, we have, we have a tiny house display set up by Lori Barbie. So she has all her tiny houses and then the kids can vote on that. So it's kind of fun to have those types of displays as well. So our book circulation has gone up as we have had more choice reading assignments. As you can see, in November, it went up a lot just because of those assignments and students checking out books. Full disclosure, our staff for a bit were checking out the books to display so they'd remember where the books were. So there was a little bump in September as they did that, but we, we noticed that skewed our circulation statistics, so we stopped doing that right away. Here are our Overdrive statistics. So our Overdriver are e and audio books. So the blue indicates our ebooks and the green are our audio books. The past two years in September, we have noticed a spike as people come back to school and start using our services. And here are our top ten databases. ABC Clio has an issues section that's used heavily with our students in their research and that's kind of like a bigger research articles and resources document that's created over a high interest topic. They also have historical databases in that database. And then secondly is our Badger Link and Badger Link is our free state resource that includes journals, testing tutorials, literature resources, and we are always one of the top schools in the state for using that resource, which is great. What this graph illustrates is that our students are getting exposure to searching databases, which is important in seeking good information. This is often introduced through our tech integrators and all of our databases are linked through our Launchpad so our students can access them from home. Our tech integrators, Jen Charles and Liz Monkwitz, provide the professional learning to support many of our integrated tech goals. So here are the statistics on our informal integrations. So those were, these reflect the walk-ins. So when people come into their office to discuss technology information or looking at developing lessons using technology, between Janet South and Liz at North, they had two hundred and seventy-nine drop-ins as of last week and you can see a variety of departments ask for their assistance. The tech integrators have had eighty-five formal integrations in a variety of departments and those are going to be the in-class integrating with a teacher integration and this is up from seventy formal integrations last year. Formal technology support falls into many categories and it mostly falls under digital, the digital literacy category. So you can see our research section is large, which is great for our kids. Our tech advisory committee has met over the course of this year. We have a variety of members and perspectives on our technology team, which always spurs great discussion. All of these members are not great technology users and they will admit to that, which is a wonderful thing when you're on a tech team and, you know, some people are gung ho and others are less, and so it creates a nice balance and represents our staff. So as we looked at the digital learning plan from last year, we really tried to hone in on what we, what we really wanted to be our technology goals for this year. We solicited feedback from many groups along the way and the tech advisory team ended up with recommended goals. At the core of these goals really involves student supports. So as we pulled together as an administrative team to see where all of our teams are collectively looking at, we are looking for common themes so we can all support the overall Arrowhead goals. So this is what educational technology is, it should support and enhance instruction. So this is a work in progress. And the tech advisory team looks at many other resources, including the Horizon Report. So this is actually at the college level, Horizon Report is just released, it's always released before the K-12 report. So this report really aligns with our goal through blended education, which is using your online management system to offer learning outside of your daily in-person lessons. And we are continuing to support our online learning platform, Canvas. We have a variety of student experiences, including using Canvas, that our students will have that we feel will increase their digital literacy and best prepare them for the world outside of Arrowhead. And I think as our students are bringing in their own device, really knowing how to use their device and knowing how to change things on their device and adjust, especially when they're coming in and hooking up to wireless, is really going to help them in their futures. In order to prepare our staff to adapt to educational technology, we offer a variety of supports for them as well. And we have also offered parent supports and we're looking for ways to make access to our resources and communication easier for parents. Our data goals, so our data goals are led through Sue Gatso in a lot of areas and she's really working hard on connecting Skyward to other systems. So Canvas was a big system to connect to our student information system and now she's working on connecting our summer school instance to that as well. And then we're looking at some auto enroll features that we're hopefully going to be able to do in connection with Skyward and Canvas. Achieve is connected to Google. Edit, our data warehouse, is connected to Skyward, so we have a lot of systems working together. She's also working on food service updates right now with the entire team. So we're moving from, hopefully moving from Citrix to an online version because the Citrix is not going to be supported any longer. And then of course, reporting out to Skyward, she does our state reporting and works with a lot of proofs on that. And then we are going to promote a robust and network and effective support and that is led through Jeff and Nate Schrader, Jeff Waters and Nate Schrader. So a couple of things, so we're monitoring those new systems that we put in last year. So we have our new internet service provider, which is WISNET. We still have two gigs of internet service and we kind of hover right around one gig around, you know, March Madness time and then, but that's good because we shouldn't, we shouldn't be capping out. We are slowly inching up, so we just need to keep monitoring that. The system's been, been solid and good so far. The Windows ten transition was smooth. We had to replace some software, but our staff was very adaptable and, and changing over. And then we have installed new equipment, switches, upgraded servers and all of them stable, stable. And then we put up our new backup system, which is nothing else much safer than backing up our, our information. Last year, we worked through freshman logins. So we reset logins after summer school. This year, we've already sent out the eighth grade letter saying we're going to do it on August first, so there's a specific date. And then all the freshmen will get logins on their registration letter so that they'll all be clear on it. They'll get it also at Wings, so they'll be able to log into the systems and practice logging into all of those different areas. We, our public Wi-Fi access was secured December first, so we put signs around the school and we're planning on resetting that password several times a year, so we'll update those. And then we continue to investigate making our guest access easier. That's a bit of a challenge for us right now, so we want to make sure we get that done. Our infrastructure, we've updated our closets, which include patch panels, connectors, wire managers, fiber shows, interduct, fiber, switches, all kinds of stuff. So Tim and Nate were working on installing over twenty-one hundred of feet of fiber and interduct to get this done. And the benefits of that is we went from two one-gig links to two ten-gig links, so our performance should be improved. The switch upgrade that we did, we've upgraded eleven switches. So those are all power over Ethernet now, so any devices that need to have that as service will be able to get that. We won't have to bring the extra power over to anything, so we won't have to worry about newer devices. And so the maintenance still needs to have some remodeling done, so we're working on that right now. The library closet, which is the main kind of hub of North Campus, North Campus, is completed, the hub closet over here has been updated and then the concession stand closet. So those are the big closets. And in that, like, there was a lot of shuffling going around, so it wasn't just those three closets. So a lot of work, a lot of planning went into that. Standardized testing, we're a support team for that. A lot of people around the school, Sue leads the testing area, she's the DAC for the school, but we are the support. So my staff sets up servers with content, creates logins and provides tech support to complete the technical aspects of the exam. And Jen just, Jen Charles just finished helping out with the French exam. They have to record their voice, save it as an MP3, upload it with the right file name to the right space. So the tech integrators really help out with that as well. And summer is our busiest time, so we're deploying a hundred and forty-nine new laptops. We're replacing seventeen inch square ten-year-old monitors. We're piloting new docking stations, implementing an Apple Device Manager, Jam Pro, utilizing Windows ten Application Manager to deploy applications so we don't have to collect all the teacher laptops this year. Researching arena scheduling, working through online registration, developing new digital citizenship lessons, working through new Canvas connections for summer school, attending Canvas Con in Madison, participating in Learning by Doing, book club and managing new user accounts. This is not an exhaustive list, there are many other updates and projects occurring over summer. It's all good work and I can't tell you enough times how hard the entire library and how much pride they take in keeping the system working. Any questions for Donna? Does she ever sleep?
Sort of the new laptops, like what we're using here or are they more sophisticated?
A little more sophisticated. Sorry. Yeah, those don't need, yeah, the, yeah, so the new laptops, we're, we've got a bunch of tech ed laptops coming and those are going to be our most sophisticated laptops for the most difficult hardware to deploy and then down to just our standard laptops that don't have the reliability or anything like that.
Are those the kind of units that the kids can check out at the library or?
We have, we have a variety that they can check out in the library, including the tech ed ones, we have a bunch of those and then also throughout the school. So we still have pockets of areas where we provide laptops so that they can use that specific software for the courses.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't know, I could ask you.
Some of us are smart, I don't know what.
Well, I have a lot of really good, smart people on my team, so it's good. They're keeping the networking system in good shape.
Don't let them go.
No, no, for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks Donna.
Thanks very much.
Unentertained, you do really great work. That yesterday or the day before just popped in my head, Jeff, who is our network expert, he was working on pulling some files and with someone's account, it was his time to go home, he didn't find what he was looking for and just figured those weren't there. And apparently he got partway home and something clicked like, oh, I wonder if, and he came right back to finish up just to see, like, was there any other workaround? Which is just like him and the rest of the team, they just, they just keep thinking as they leave and then they go, oh, that, that was it, and then they come back, so. Great team, we're very fortunate.
Okay. That's it. All right. Moving on to the reports, Craig and Sue.
So where in the world would you like to go? Because we-
as they leave, and then they go, oh, that, that was it, and then they come back, so. Great team, we're very fortunate.
Okay. That's it. All right. Moving on to the reports, Craig and Sue.
So where in the world would you like to go? Because we have the trips. So the first one is the standard, done every year. It's, I know it's been every year, it's been forever, the Village Weekend's up at Concord...
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm saying, Bemidji.
Bemidji, Minnesota.
I mean, I've been there. Just all of a sudden, it's in summer.
Is it Bemidji?
It is. But they're, they're all over the place up there. They're not close. They're, they're kind of all over, but if you get to Bemidji, you're almost there.
Did you walk across Mississippi into Bemidji?
It's very close to there. My task, State Park.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve that. When is that next?
That's April. I think it's November. It's in the fall. It's in November 1st. November. Oh, yes. November's on November, but it's not Thanksgiving, it was a week or two before that, so they do miss a couple of days.
We'll see the day, right, though. We don't want to send them to Bemidji for no reason.
Hey, they cannot get into any trouble at Bemidji.
I move that we approve the Concordia Language Village and Submersion Weekend.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions on that?
Because Sue's guaranteeing that no student's going to get in trouble.
So Bemidji for crying out loud.
Want to change your motion?
What do you know?
Your motion is second, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So the next one is another China trip, but this one is a little different because it's during spring break. It's overlapping a little bit, going over a little bit, but you're going to Beijing, Shanghai, Wuyang, and Zhengzhou.
So who sent them on the trip to China?
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions on that one?
Have they been here before?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Aren't they have big chaperones, like?
Yeah. I mean, sometimes you get asked, come on to these things. Kathy Nelson went on one. Yeah. Connie Lagerman went to China one year. Yeah. I mean, they've been, they've been, they've been to China.
I want this to be in order.
Okay, well, that's...
How do they, how do they treat Americans up there? Just curious.
I think in a lot of the places, they're pretty touristy places, but I think they've been, they've had good experiences. My son was over there for a month working at the Chinese Dock Exchange College, NCO 65. Every time we walked anywhere, people had to take their picture with them. They came running out.
They're giants.
All right. All American said that.
They can't send emails from there, because everything gets...
All right. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Then Spain. I'll hit it up. So who wants to go to Spain?
I do.
Okay. And that one goes back to being the regular summer one. We know about it, but this is the whole state tour. So these are all a little different, you know? Every one of them are a little different. If you can speak, if you can go.
Move to approve the trip to Spain. Second. You have a motion, second. Any questions on that one? You have all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I mean, now they're scanning. We haven't had this one. Have we ever had this one? I don't think so. That's my thought. So this is a little different thing. Norway, Denmark, and Sweden.
Just for an egg, I guess.
So who wants to go there? So...
Move to approve the trip to Scandinavia. Second. Your motion is second. Any questions on that one?
I just want to point out, this one is the Hannah and Chris trip. You know, they've done Africa, Thailand, and now Scandinavia.
It won't be digging well, sir.
No, this is very history and culture focused, and the last two had more service.
So it's very different work. Service. But the kids are lining up. They like that team.
These trips are without full, full capacity, potentially.
And one of the comments that Sue made at the meeting was that her kids go to a different school, and they're a little jealous because their school doesn't even offer trips. And I've heard that from a number of other schools as well.
World language. World language.
You know? So we're really fortunate to have these opportunities.
I mean, so think about this. We have all of these at one time because our teachers are willing to do this. I, it's amazing, you guys.
It takes a lot of work to set up a trip.
Well, and it takes a lot of, it's quite a responsibility then to take them, and they're taking them. I mean, how many of these cool trips they found everywhere will work, for goodness sake?
And Sue could give you her experience, this last one, but she was, went to Italy, and two of the kids had thrown, their passports were not, so she had to stay back with them for a day, so she was a day behind, because that's what chaperones have to do. It's like, you can't say, well, sorry, we're going.
Catch a ride back.
So did you, were you staying at the airport, or did you?
No, we, we, at a hotel, it worked out fine. But it was, yeah, it was just a passport issue, and we got it fixed.
And what did your T-shirt say?
But there were other issues as well. My T-shirt said, I'm with the band. I ended up in a hotel room by myself. For one night, I was not with the band. But we got caught up. We got there. I got caught up. They're awesome.
This was in Chicago. This was in Italy. Woo!
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so let me just take a little side note. You know, we've heard all about coaching and officiating, because that was a curriculum thing, and we've heard about all these cool trips. Is it not the best? You can move on to finance.
We'll be done.
Going back to curriculum, I talked to a girl who's in the EMS program. Oh my gosh, she was just raving. You know, between the time that she spends here and then the time that she spends being a CNA and an EM, what a great addition that was to our, our curriculum here.
That is Sue's...
Fabulous. I don't know if you can add it into it?
Brenda King.
Brenda King, yeah.
It's phenomenal. It's been very well received. I just hope that we can keep it up.
Thirteen students enrolled next, next year.
Okay, good.
And we can't take more than 15. So it's really...
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's really, and it's helped, it will, has already and will continue to help local communities, no matter where you go in the state. You have an opportunity to help others, so.
And there's just so many opportunities at this point, you guys.
I love this.
Moving on. Finance and legislation.
Go for it.
Yeah, eat that.
I might even try.
Don't hurt your first.
This time's running out after all.
Excite us now. Excite us.
Pressure's on.
It is.
I really don't have an update for the budget, so, I mean, we're really waiting on, on the state legislature to finish up their 19.1 bionic budget, and there's not a, there's not a real, there's not a real near end in sight, I don't think. So it's a word, we're just kind of in a wait-and-see mode, mode, mode.
That's going to grow.
So, I mean, obviously you haven't told, you know, the October, certified the levy, so we should, we should have, we should have a...
He talks about changing the way that you have.
Yeah.
He's going to be sitting at home watching that TV. He's already doing it.
Steve made a bigger report last, last one, so there's not much for it.
And then the next meeting will be determined as correct sometime July 1st.
After Steve's gone. Yeah, before Steve's gone.
Push that one. All right. Building the grounds, there's no report, the meeting was canceled for me, so. Okay, moving on to personality of a number of items. The, just a real quick report out on our May first meeting, this was the exchange of proposals between teachers group and the board. And then the first discussion action item is on the 2019-2020 personnel agreement between Arrowhead United Teachers Organization and the Arrowhead High School District. As you recall, through our finance committee meetings and personnel meetings, currently and in the past, this is, it's based off of the base wage and other things that are nationally related to that.
Sure. When, since Act 10 came about, essentially the only thing that is, you're allowed to bargain over is base wages. So when we do a base wage calculation, we take the, pretty much every staff member and put them at the BA base cell, and then figure out, and then any staff members that require a master's degree, they're put at the MA base cell. And I come up with a dollar amount, and restricted to not be able to go above 2.44% increase in base wages. And as a result of some, you know, budget difficulties this year, we, we gave the 2.44% on base wages, but not on every cell in the, to the teacher pay schedule. So essentially what this is doing, the base wage will allow a 1.52796% increase to the salary schedule, spread out amongst every schedule, every, or every cell. And then when you add another 0.47204%, that brings it up to 2% per cell increase, and that extra 0.47904% is actually a supplemental pay increase, along with, with step increases and lane increases when we talk about the salary schedule. So essentially what this is saying along, you know, as far as base wages plus supplemental pay is we're allowing lane advancement, step increases, and a 2% per cell increase in the teacher salary schedule.
Last year, we didn't do that supplemental one, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Well, we nicked something, but I can't remember which part that was.
They wanted us, there was a, there was a request to consider adding some additional money to the top. The people had to add me a 30 lane, and we said we had to wait until we were the final certification was in the fall, and then we waited, and then we, we had discussions in November, December to consider it, and we moved it.
Thank you.
Steve, I think I must have misheard you, just based on what I'm reading here, but you said that the raise was effective across the board, all of those, right?
Correct. 2%. Yep. So as you recall, because the, the teachers union has the right every year to organize, reorganize, and that, we were obligated to negotiate with them just on that base wage and other, no other parts of a contract, basically. In our discussions with them, they did ask for consideration, again, for the top, the folks that are in the, in the 30 lane, basically, to have additional percentages added, 2.5% basically, 2.44. That was just a request, that was not, that's not part of this final proposal. So it's 2%, not the 2.44? Correct. Yeah. And there won't be any further consideration like last year. If this is approved, this is what it will be for the year. So I would entertain a motion to approve the 2019-2020 personnel agreement between Arrowhead Ma teachers and Arrowhead U of A schools. Second. You have a motion and a second. Any other questions on that? You have none, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then the next one is discussion action on the 2019-2020 teaching staff compensation proposal, which is basically what Steve just described. That particular handout shows you pretty much the same information, and then the actual key schematic showing. Different names, actually. I approve, I move that we approve the teaching staff compensation proposal. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? You have none, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Then the next one would be for the support staff, and our discussion is, and this is something we've had at the practice for a while now, that across the board, regardless of the position an employee holds here, he has the same type of percentage increases. So for the support staff, it's 2% per cell. This is everything from the administrative assistants to custodians, that whole support group. So I'd move that we approve the support staff compensation proposal as presented. Second. You have a motion and a second. Any questions on that one? You have none, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next one would be the confidential support staff, which is pretty much anybody that works in this hallway, works for Steve and Laura. Same, same thing, 2% increase. Again, I move that the confidential support staff compensation proposal be approved as presented. Second. You have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? You have none, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, the last one would be our administrative compensation contract proposal, which, again, offers that same 2% for our administrative staff. Again, I hope that the administrative compensation proposal be approved as presented. All second, again. Motion and a second. Any questions on that one? You have none, all in favor, state aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Steve, for all your work on, and Laura, for all your work on putting these all together. I know it's a challenge every year, but you managed to do a great job with that, so thank you for that.
And I'd like to thank the board on behalf of the staff. You know, we're in tough financial times, and the fact that the board values staff in attracting and retaining excellent staff members means a lot to, to all of us, so we appreciate your consideration.
Or do you have a sense that the staff is satisfied in general upon some stuff?
Well, as you heard, we, our union has presented a proposal. But honestly, I haven't heard from a lot of teachers. Union leadership is representing the top tier of teachers, that top schedule that have been here the longest, and the rationale is if you're in the rest of the schedule, you're making less money, but if you're working for your master's degree, you can be earning more, potentially more than a CPI increase. And so the rationale is when you're at the top, you're stalled out at the top, and so having raises that are less than a CPI increase is rough on people's budget. But I think the general population of teachers also totally understands our budget, we don't have extra money. If we had lots of extra money, we would be doing more for facilities, we'd be doing more for programming, and we'd be doing more for compensation, potentially. And when we're needing to balance all of those big parts or portions of our budget, all of those take hits. We also know from our staff engagement survey that the majority of our staff members are satisfied with their salaries here, and the vast majority of our employees want to stay working here, to the tune of 1% of 179 people said that they were potentially interested in the, everyone else wants to stay, and lots of positive comments about culture, climate. And you know, from national research, it's not just about salary compensation, why people work someplace, it's also about the collaboration and the people and the culture, and I think we've got to get the toe in here.
Steve, that, is Steve that 1%?
Thank you, boys, Steve.
Could be zero, Steve. Was there any reaction or to the recent article in Freeman of the rankings of schools from our staff at all? I think we were 12, was it?
I think you're referring to the US News and the...
That was, I can't, sorry.
I think our staff is proud. Now, that particular report, one year we might be fourth place, one year sixth, one year 12, the next year back to two. And all of those rankings are based on some different type of criteria. That one happens to be about advanced placement testing, poverty rates, and diversity rates. Other ones are based on other topics.
It's funny, they group those three topics together, isn't it?
Right. Right.
I mean, it's not grouping the teams.
We've had real high rankings, and like, I looked at the school.
Right, right. I was just pointing, I'm like, oh, yeah.
Each ranking is, it differs, and if you, I mean, 12 out of 1,000 high schools is fabulous. Our ranking nationwide, we're in the top 3% of high schools. But I think more importantly, you asked our staff reaction. Our staff cares about student success. And student success isn't just about an ACT score or advanced placement scores. It, academics matter, but so do social, emotional, wellness, so do life skills that you've been hearing about from staff members. Success for students after high school is what's really important, whether they're going on to college, or careers, or military. So I think that's what we're primarily concerned about. We know our students, and are they successful?
Just from sitting on this board, there's no way anybody here could not get that the school thinks about the whole child. I mean, that not forgetting about anyone. We hear about those few kids that have a program. We hear about the big mega, you know, they come in all sizes and shapes here, and I just can't say enough about all of the guys that do that, because obviously, I get excited about it, and I'm the cheerleader, but I wouldn't have anything to cheer if you weren't doing all that, because it's amazing that we hit. I love to talk about this place, anybody that listens to me, because I'll say, we just had a president, but these are just a couple of kids that are being caught here, you know, and taken care of, and we are so good at that. It's not about masses here, even though it gets to the mass, but we take care of everybody in so many ways that the mass gets covered.
We know that in here, but Joe Pollock doesn't know that yet. I see articles that it's.
Well, they do if they talk to me!
And they have to measure what they can, what they can, they have to like rank it what they can easily measure, so they just have to look at like, what's a statistic that we can grab from every high school in the nation, and then compile that for.
And we all know statistics, you can put it any way you want, you can make them look any way you want.
Just so you guys know, Brian from GPS, who was in here last year, he graduated today from the program, so that was kind of a nice moment for us.
That's so cool.
To address your question, Craig, a little bit earlier, we had a conference today, a formal conference with one of our teachers, and it was really, I wish you guys could have seen it, I wish you could have been part of that, because it was one of our teachers who's been here 19 years, and he lives on Condamock, and has an, there's an opening on Condamock, and it sounds like he's been approached. It's a physics position, hard to keep those guys, and even though the salary they're offering is more than what we are offering here, he's not interested in leaving here, and it's because of the support he feels from administration, the support he feels from the board. He has been part of a number of different class changes that we've been involved in, block physics, block chemistry, the team talk, physics, and tech ed area, and he feels that that is more important to him than some money. And he feels supported by everybody in this room, and that's why he wants to stay here. And is not interested in leaving and going anyplace else, because he knows that he's probably not going to get that. He's talked to people who've gone over there, and they don't have that, they are chasing a number. It's about how do we get our ACT score up, as opposed to how do we educate the kids? And so, and I think that's a sentiment, and I say anecdotal, it's one person, but I think that's a fairly common sentiment amongst our staff, so I just thought I'd share that with you, because he was very supportive of you guys, and very complimentary of the board as well, so.
Who wouldn't like that?
I mean, we're great!
Great.
Just one more follow-up. Anybody on this three, end of the tail, might know this, or maybe bred you as well, but the salary schedule we just looked at, is that mid-range with others around us, or is it top range? Or is it lower?
Our salary, the range from our starting teachers at around $44,000 to our most veteran and highly educated teachers around $83,000 is very, very typical across southeastern Wisconsin. What, what I could not say, like, this is typical teacher, salary schedules used to be the same in all school districts before Act 10. After Act 10, so many were just thrown out, and so there isn't one common pay schedule type anymore. Some are based on performance of students, some are based on their score being evaluated in a classroom, some are based on professional growth and development like ours is, some are based purely on duration in a district and not professional development or performance. So that differs greatly.
I think just kind of Greg said, at least from the perspective that one staff member is, yeah, I mean, in the big picture, it's important, money is important, because that's where retirement is based on, from the WRS. But he also knows that he's got 10 years in front of him or something like that, that could be a long 10 years in the wrong building versus a very productive 10 years in the one you're having impact on, that culture is important, and money isn't always the thing to chase.
He did mention, he did mention he worried, you know, with Steve going, he's like, is that guy, is the replacement going to be as supportive as Steve has been, and so that was a concern that he saw.
Well, the salary schedule helps attract and retain really high-quality teaching staff. I just hired another person from Iowa, she's coming here from Iowa, and by the time she got done interviewing with the stable players, she had different offers on the table from various, like, southeastern Wisconsin school districts. And we got to talk about like compensation, I said, well, here's kind of where you would be, but do you know like, kind of how the way things work in Wisconsin, you know, kind of compared where you're at? And it's the second person coming from out of state where, as soon as I explained to them, like, what other models are out there, and how Arrowhead is atypical to have the salary schedule, they want to be here when they hear that it's about teaching, about learning how to teach kids in the most effective way, and not proving to administrators how effective you are from a score so that you can move up a lane, and that it's more of a collaborative effort just to get better as a whole, and that it's, you move up with age and professional development. So I think that that's huge for people, and I know that neighboring school districts around us are going back to look at their post-Act 10 compensation schedules, and a lot of them are considering going back to a salary schedule, because just realizing that the paper performance model, as we talked about, with the difficulty in assessing, like, what's the best in education, and trying to boil it down to a metric, is kind of a faulty business. So in order to, again, attract and retain and keep people happy, just go into a predictable salary schedule, because you have people that are so upset with, like, I did all these things, they told me to do all these things, and I said, let me move up the schedule, that's because you get into a budget cruncher situation, you say, we can only have 20 excellent, high-end teachers, and everyone else has to be at this level, and, you know, so on and so forth, so you kind of work yourself in that kind of, but people, it's a selling point for us, and then there's no two ways about it, so.
And I think kind of piggybacking on that, those that have gone to the more competitive, the principles that I've talked to, one of the things they're seeing is the lack of collaboration is going down dramatically, because if I share with Adam my great idea, and he takes it, now he's, now he benefits from it, and then my, I don't get, you know, and maybe I might not, he might be able to do it better than I can do it, so he gets the salary bump for my idea, so I'm going to keep my idea to myself, which then, who hurts, who is punished by that? Well, the students are punished by that, because if we're not always collaborating, we're not sharing ideas. And so, you can't put the teachers in a position of competing against each other for a pot of money, because it will just be detrimental to the kids.
Okay, awesome. The last thing is, our next meeting is on May 17th, we have, this is for the personnel committee, we will select the teachers of the year and the Arrowhead award recipients. Deadline is the 10th plan for the awards. And just as Laura had pointed out, our normal end-of-the-school-year luncheon will not take place, because they have to be extended, because of weather this year, so that will, those recognitions will all occur at the fall orientation, I think. So if you have any nominations, two together. Okay, moving on, policy.
Well, first of all, Daryl, I owe you an apology, because you weren't at the last board meeting, and I heavily emphasize that everybody show up at policy, but I neglected to give you that same invitation.
Okay.
So I could rehash this whole policy thing over, but we were all there, so, did you have a chance to read it?
I skipped through it, but you can translate.
It was really phenomenal, because we had all of our administration here telling us exactly what they do about issues that come up with referrals from students, and it was really an eye-opening experience, and I don't know about all of you, but I came away thinking that we just have an incredible staff that treats each individual student with individual needs, and promotions, and awards, and whatever, so it was really pretty cool, and I'm so sorry you missed it.
Okay, so our first, I have this discussion action to approve new policy 686, which is pleased access to students in the school. That was the, as Donna can't point out, that was the broken discussion, the policy. So we have a motion, a second. Any questions on that? Aye. Hearing none all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just as, I'm sorry, Donna, just as a kind of a follow-up, we noticed in a neighboring district, they were prepared to cut their school resource out, so they're retracting that a little bit from what I read. The other thing, I just want to, I apologize if you went down early, we should probably have a recognition on the most recent unfortunate school shooting in Colorado. You read a couple interesting stories there, the two kids that tackled the mean shooter, one, the one that survived is actually going into the Marines, so I'm sure he'll be a poster for the Marine Corps. And unfortunately, the other one that died had just had a conversation with his dad about, his dad talked to him about what would you do, you had a shooter in school, and the dad was kind of saying, it's okay to hide or to whatever, and he said, no, I'd go after him. And he went after him, and got a bullet point, basically, through his heart, so, very unfortunate, so just, it's unfortunate that our society still has to have this, this occurring, but it just shows the importance of keeping that connection, and police were there within, really, literally seconds, they were there to deal with the issue and stuff like that, so it's just an important thing for our school to have these types of resources available to us. Okay, the next one is on the parent athletic and co-curricular conduct.
Just a few tweaks on it, but we're going to have to probably revisit it, and we'll be there another six months when.
Yeah, no major changes from last year's input to next year, and then eventually we'll add some more changes.
I move that, we adopt it, this present.
Second? We have a motion, a second, on that, on the parent athletic, athlete, and co-curricular conduct. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a next meeting.
Oh, yeah, it's May 16th, 7 o'clock. Neither.
It was. It's for the whole handbook review, so.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, you all want to go through that handbook and find any of the issues that we miss, feel free. Like, for instance, on one of them, we corrected the fact that we've been approving this thing for years and years and years, and we are calling them children when they should be students, so it's just that little stuff. So even if you can't make it, let us know if you find anything in there that should be changed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's a lot of, a lot.
Okay, moving on, other reports. For WASB, we need appointment of a delegate in alternate to the 2020 WASB delegate assembly. I would be willing to pick that up.
(inaudible).
Don't need a lot of, a lot of armpits, Steve.
Do we have a motion? A second. Multiple seconds.
Yeah, third and fourth and whatever.
All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? CISA, we need appointment of representatives in CISA 1 annual delegate.
We need to nominate the dean of the school.
I don't know, I can't, no, yeah, we do, actually, we should revisit that, because I'm sorry. I nominate him.
It's just that this is during the day, and it's hard for, I can go to the meetings.
Wait, we're back to the first one, though, that we just.
Oh, you're back, oh, sorry. I thought we were.
Yes, agreed.
I nominate Donna.
Second?
What am I doing?
This is me.
Why, because, yeah, yeah, all right, because I was doing that for nine years, so I should do it again?
Second for Donna.
Yeah.
All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Why, thank you!
Here you go.
You better not get sick.
All right, now, CISA, we need appointment of the representatives in CISA.
I don't know, I can go to the meetings every month, I do. And I even did a Monday, or I mean, a morning, 7 o'clock meeting last week, but the ones that are during the day, it's just hard.
Is that what this is?
Yeah, I looked at it, one of my packets of.
They'll nominate Sue to have.
Well, it says that board control meetings will usually occur from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30.
It says 6:00. This is the annual delegate convention, though. Oh, when is that? I can't remember, I, you know, I saw it.
It doesn't say. I think it says it's 5:30 on the 21st.
Oh, really?
The annual convention.
Oh, then I can do that.
Nice try.
I really did think I looked at it, one of my, there's so many things I don't understand of this.
Okay, motion for Sue Schultz.
Sure.
Second?
Sure, a motion, a second.
Who made the, you made the motion?
All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Sue. You're a trooper. All right, moving on, on new business employee transactions, we do not have any designations. We move on to contracts and letters of appointments, which are impacted.
I'll move to accept. Approve the contracts and letters of appointment.
A second. A motion, a second. Any questions on those?
Is Catherine the one from Iowa? Oh, we welcome her.
Call her Catherine, I only know this Katie, it'll be for a second. Yep, Katie.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next one is a motion to approve all the returning professional staff for 2019 and 2020, which was, that list is in here, impacted.
I'll make a motion to approve all returning professional staff.
Second?
A motion, a second. Any questions on those?
Just FYI, teacher contracts will go out on, by May 15th, and they're due back by June 15th, statutory dates.
All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is discussion action to issue the final staff contract non-renewal notice for the one staff member.
I move that we issue that motion.
A motion, a second. Any questions on that one? You're none all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is discussion action on the 2019-2020 occupational therapy services, 660301, cooperative agreement, which is impacted.
I would approve that, motion to approve that.
A motion, a second. Any questions on that?
Is this, is this a recurring annual?
Correct. Yep. All right, motion, a second. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just say that the person who fills that role is excellent, and it's been excellent.
Next action item is discussion action on the 2019-2020 CISA 1 service contract. This is an annual thing, that's what I'll correct. So, motion?
A second.
Yeah, a second. Any questions on that? You're none all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next action item is discussion and action on the open enrollment attendance requests, and we have a specific motion, I mean, to the record, and you should have a spreadsheet on there that shows you the numbers of schools, children, students.
I move to approve the 2019-2020 open enrollment attendance requests, provided students meet the criteria, as outlined in state statute 118.51, which includes no expulsions or pending expulsions, no habitual, tuency issues, and space is available.
Second.
Motion on the second, any questions on this?
Do you know if I can do it? So, just in looking at the spreadsheet, it looks like we've got, is it two special ed kids coming in?
Maybe just one, we're not sure, but one of them's going to carry an IEP when they come to high school. So it might go down to one, but might go to two.
That student would still come in, just wouldn't have the IEP.
Yeah, that's a family decision, though.
Yes.
That's great. So we have a spot.
We have a motion on the second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next action is discussion action on the 2019-2020 bank depository resolution. This is what allows staff, probably only change, and, so Steve can write checks after.
Really? I look forward to this every year, that we adopt the bank depository resolution.
You got a second?
I quite like going to curriculum, but it's all I got.
So we have a motion on the second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Not much is like.
Next action item is certification of the 2019 Arrowhead High School graduates.
So, I look.
Sorry, second.
Here we go. All right, any questions on that?
He's got a graduate.
Kind of conflicting, I think with some hesitation.
All right, so we have a motion on the second, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no donations this time. Pursuant to state statute 198511, the board will move it to full session, and we convene to address public business matters, reason for the full session is the Howard J. Muller High Center Facility Management, or, or Hertie and Washington Building, full session.
Second.